For Monday, April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two, it is one oh four P M. And this is a special, a non-regular meeting of the board. Uh, we're meeting just for one agenda item, which is to discuss the profile that's been developed for the town administrator position. By our consultant at the Collins Center, Mary I. Carty, who is joining us. Um, my name is Katie Conlon. I'm the Chair of the Board for one more day. And why don't we all introduce ourselves, please?
Arthur Doyle, Vice Chair.
Thanks, School of Secretary.
Melinda Collins, Member.
Richard Wells, Member.
Henry Fagan, Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mary I. Carty from the Collins Center.
And thank you, Mary, for joining us today and for your work developing a profile. So that's. Why don't we jump right into that? And I should mention that this meeting is being recorded and might even be broadcast live by M A. T V, but will be replayed. So why don't we jump right into our sole agenda item, which is the profile? And why don't I turn it over to Ms. I. Carty?
All right, great. Well, I'm so happy to be here. I'm glad this worked out. I'm loving that you're doing the Eagle Scout. I've got one Eagle Scout and the other one has his first day of his project this coming Saturday. So. Um, I appreciate, and our troop always appreciates when the elected officials help out and support. So that's my pitch as a mother. Um, what I'd love to do is have somebody give me permission to share my screen.
That would be great. Is that something that Tom Pillar can help us with?
Whoever the host of the meeting can do it.
We are live, Madam Chair. I just flipped over to. Milton Cable, we are being broadcast.
Looks like Arthur is a co-host.
Oh, okay. We don't have Lynn today. Lynn is out. Um, so unless Tom Pillar can help us with the sheen's screen sharing, maybe Arthur is able to give you permission to share your screen.
So Arthur, if you put your cursor on the three dots next to my, up in my corner, top right corner, you can make me a co-host.
Hmm, so I'm sorry, Arthur. I just checked. I am, I am not a co-host.
I just made you stop video again in the spotlight for everyone.
All right, yeah.
I think I'm co-host.
We can do it. All right. Are you all seeing the document?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, we did it. All right, so. Back here as I shared the combined document, and then I got a few more comments, and I appreciate. Um, these being merged together again. So I thought maybe we could just walk through it quickly and then kind of get some direct. Yeah, input on it. So. There was debate over how much information to put in under the, uh, the Milton explanation. Uh, some felt there was too much, not enough. Uh, so really, we need to kind of walk through and say, what do we want to keep? Um, what is, what is too much? So you can see that this document has different colored highlights. Um, and you can see here, somebody recommended crossing out this whole section. I'm just gonna go through it quickly, and then we can go back to the details. So a lot of discussion of, you know, do we really need to put so much information on the town itself? And somebody made an excellent point. Candidates should do their own research. It's about a balance of saying how the board wants to project the town. Um, it's really, you know, your, your vision of how you want the town described. So we have some, some comments here. Um, there was, uh, somebody recommended really the, we're talking about the responsibility of the town administrator. What we did was use the job description. Um, and that's how we filled that in. Uh, somebody has recommended kind of shortening it and making it, you know, shorter, more concise bullet points. Um, I don't think there's anything that is different. It's just, um, you know, we use the job description. The. Um, so, and again, these are all merged together, so I'm just gonna say somebody. I don't need to attribute who said what. Um, I don't think we need to tell them when the board meets. Um, you know, I, I don't think that that's, you know, appropriate to selling the position. And then we get into the government section. There were some edits on that. There's not that many changes to this, so that I think we can just clean up. And there's some. There's a few comments on the priorities, so I'd like to spend a little bit of time going through these to say, how do we want to clean these up? There's pretty much consensus with some great points about, um, things were a little vague, um, so we can, we can tighten those up. And that was really it. So there's not an awful lot of work to do today. I do want to, um. Once we go through this, I can call up the, the actual formatted one to ask you some questions. We got some grammar and comma. Comments on that, but I think those are housekeeping, and I can just incorporate that. But I guess I would ask. Um, you know, how much of a description do you want to put under the town? So we've got, you know, when it was incorporated and, um. Then there is. Conversation. You know, I guess I'd ask for people to say, do you want to cut this section out, add to it? Because this is where you kind of had some disagreement on it.
Mary, if I could just ask you before we get into what people's individual thoughts are, could you just explain how this will document will be used? How it'll be distributed and who will get this profile?
Sure. So the profile, and I also sent you the, the glossy markup of what it would look like, right? So everybody saw.
Yes.
Uh, that's what we use to market the position. That's not gonna be on our webpage. We're gonna ask you to put it on. Page. That's what gets sent out, um, to all of the people we're directly recruiting. So this document becomes your sales pitch, and you've got to keep it. It's, it's not a, um, it's not a town report. You know, so it doesn't have to be heavily into, you know, the, the weeds. Um, but it should provide enough information so that somebody who says, oh, well, I might be interested in that job. You know, what are they like? What is the board like? What's the government like? So it's really a higher level sort of, and then the. The part that is the most important, because whoever said it is right, the history of the town is, is very important, but we can be a little more concise on that. What you really want to focus are the sections on the duties and responsibility. Um, of the town administrator. Um. So the person who redid this section talked about the responsibility of the, the select board, while it is true. That obviously the town administrator is doing the work of the board. I would recommend you focus a little bit more on what their duties are, because they want to, they want to know how you interpret their role. So we might want to do a little bit of work on that. And then the other one is, um. The priorities of the town and the town administrator. So this is, this document should be what you're expecting of the town administrator. Uh, because you have, it's about what you're gonna delegate to that person. It's not, it, not to be, um. Flippant, it doesn't matter what your role is, but you want that person's role to be, because many boards hold some of those responsibilities themselves. Many boards say, we want this person to be everything. You know, and check with us on everything. So we've really got to get at the nature of the job they're going to, to hold. That's how this is used, and we take the direction from whatever you vote as the profile. We use this with the screening committee to say, this is how you should be evaluating the resumes and the candidates that are before you. And it really becomes our roadmap.
So should we take it in pieces and talk first about the town of Milton description, and then we'll go on to the duties and the priorities? Oh, uh, Melinda has her hand raised. Melinda, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Ms. Conlon. I just wanted to let people know, I just tried to take for my own edification, the. All the comments that, um, that and suggestions people made. And just put them all in to see what it would look like if we did that. This isn't, you know, um. Set some of the suggestions, like for changes in language are, are, are certainly mine, and you can see that because. It's obviously my document, but, um, but yeah, so I, I just wanted to let people know that's, that's where this particular document came from. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Doyle.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering with respect to the town of Milton. If it would be possible to have, uh, three major com- components in there. One that gives enough of the history truncated to some extent, as Mary said. Where things are at the present and some, some sense of vision of the future. So that there's a sense of, uh, dynamics to the town, opportunities, as well as challenges, et cetera. And not just overly retrospective.
Okay, uh, Mr. Wells and then Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mary, by only going back to the first paragraph, and I've written many, especially in my. He is as Deputy Chief, I wrote millions of dollars of grant applications for this community, and. I've always described the town, and it may have actually been John who, Conan, who suggested to me is, I've always described the town as. The town of Milton instead of saying border, but we have, we have the largest, you don't have to say the largest, but we bought eight point five miles of the city in Boston. To include the neighbors of Dorchester, Lower Mills, Mattapan, High Park, and Reville. And there is no other community in the Commonwealth. That borders as many neighbors of that city as we do. We are, we are alone in that distinction. I think it might be. Um. It might be worthy to put that in there if the members agree. Just a thought. You know, it's one thing to say you're border Boston, like Newt could say they border Boston. I heard a Newt description yesterday on B Z the other night. So we did border Boston. It's like. One little neighborhood. We are, we are a significant, Boston and Milton have a, a significantly linked in so many ways, which is, it might be. Worthy to put it there, but it's up to them, whatever anyone thinks. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wells. To that point, I think maybe noting the, the regional approach to some issues might be helpful. Um, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I like both of those. Um, I, I also like, um, Mr. Doyle's. Um, sort of structuring that we should say something about each of those, and I've been wondering how we. You know, how does this board see the town? Because really, we're portraying, it, it's just like a, a portrait or a memoir, you know, this little section. Um, and I think we're, we're a community at many different kinds of crossroads. And, um, and so, uh, for that reason, I, I think, I think Mr. Doyle's framework would work well.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Um, Ms. I. Carty, I think what I would just add is that I actually liked your initial description, but I thought it could be shortened. Um, I, you know, I think we can point out that it had, we were had an aggregate, uh, let me pronounce it, an agrarian past. But I don't think we need all the detail about the mills. You know, I think we could take some of that out. I do. See the note that there's no mention of East Milton Square or the access to the major highways. I would try to incorporate that, and maybe you can work that into Arthur's proposed. Um, structuring, but, and I think you could cut back a little bit on the, the former railroad, but talk about the trolley and. Again, the connectivity to Boston and the major highways. It, it might be also worth bringing out. That we have largely a residential tax base and not a, not a large commercial base. But otherwise, I, you know, I thought you had a lot of the good portions of the history here, which is important to keep some of it. I think just, we can truncate it.
It's great.
Does anyone, uh, Mr. Wells, your hand is raised. Was that from before, or do you have a new comment?
No, Madam Chair, I'm all set. I just have on my phone, so I gotta bring it back down. Sorry.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. Mr. Zulus and Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I agree with the, the comments. Um, the only thing that I would say, um. Uh, is, uh, I don't know that I would call out East Milton Square, um, uh, as opposed to calling out any other section of town. But I do think access to the highways is something that should be called out both, both on, both ninety-three and at ninety-five. And, and, and how that, that's an important junction point. Um, so that's, uh, that's, uh, I think that's an important thing to bring out. And other than that, I, I agree with all the comments that have been made.
Just to that point, Mr. Do, Mr. Zulus, uh, before we go to Mr. Doyle, maybe the, maybe the square fits in with the rest of the lack of commercial, you know, that we have one. We have one primary business area and two smaller ones, but still the commercial base is relatively small, or may, maybe it's not even worth pointing out by name, the square.
Well, I, I agree, pointing out a commercial place. I, I, the only thing I'm concerned about is calling out one section of the town.
Okay.
Um, uh, than, other than another. Um, perhaps it's necessary or important, but I, but I, I think, you know, calling out, because if you call out the resident, the, the commercial area. He smelt him well. What about lower, you know, lower mills? And so, um, so that's the only thing. I, I, I think there's a way to characterize it, way to characterize the commercial base. And, and we could call up several areas. I just, I just, I worry about parts of the town feeling excluded.
Okay. All right, um. Do we have any more comments on this before we go on to the duties of the job?
So I think that, uh, these are great ideas, and what I'll do is I'll pull from this. I do think the bordering with Boston and all, Boston and all the neighborhoods. Um, I, the, the highways, uh, that's important. Um, when you talk about a regional approach, how would you characterize that? That's just my clarifying question to whoever wanted to.
Well, I, I, I mentioned that in response to Richard's comments about the, the large border with Boston, but.
Okay.
You know, maybe for a short description like this, maybe it's not needed here. But what might be helpful for us to send to you. Ms. I. Carty is the, um, standard and poorest report on the town, which might have some language in there that's helped.
Oh, great.
closes to the holiday, to the hot, the highways, um, and. Some other background information on the town that you may find it helpful, you may not, but it might be worth us sending that to you.
I'd be happy to get it.
Okay.
All right, great.
Uh, Mr. Doyle and then Mr. Zulus.
Madam Chair, with respect to the mentioning of the deposit river, which I applaud, uh, might we want to make any reference to the recent EPA grant? No, no. It just says no.
Did you even say?
It's not like you just said no.
I just, just, I'm just thinking, Arthur, like, is, and I was thinking this when Michael, we'll be writing a book before we're done. I, one thing Mary did say, I don't know who said it. I, I, the only reason I brought up the Boston Davis, because it, it just. It has such an impact from all the things you've talked about, the Bonza River to traffic ninety-three, crime, education, religion, so many things, working people, you know. This town is, is a third empty every day, one third empty going to the city or somewhere else to work. So. Um, we could rewrite a book before we're done, but I, I like the part that someone said let them do their homework, too. You know, those are, I think, the contemporaneous things. Let's see who, let's see who does their homework. There's been more press was just on. Was just on Fox twenty-five again last night, the whole story about the deposit, but that's just probably on thought on it.
Okay, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the, on the regional approach, um, perhaps that, that may be best, uh, as the final bullet. There was a question, I think, about one more bullet and the priorities. And I think, I think that's important, and, and just to, to mention the, the substance of it, Mary. Uh, we've worked together with our neighborhoods of Dorchester, Mattapan on initiatives over the last couple of years. We've worked with Quincy. We're trying to work with Quincy on other things, Quincy and Braintree. So, so it's really the surrounding cities and towns of Milton where. Whether we've tried to work together on certain initiatives that affect all of us. So, so it's really, you know, uh, just in the last few years, as I said. Dorchester, Mattapan, Quincy, attempts with Braintree, uh, and Hingham, uh, as well, but certainly, uh, we've been able to work together with Quincy and Boston. On initiatives over the past few years.
Great.
Yeah, and, and as, as someone just said, it is important to keep this brief, and candidates will look at the website, they'll look at other information. We, we, we may want to have, and this gets us into the next point about the duties of the T A. We may want to have a, a link to. The special legislation that governs the T A.
We would put that on, on, on the webpage as well.
Okay.
You know, it, sometimes we put in a profile like important links, but this becomes the practice of. You, you want people to do their research, too, you, you know. Eight. But if it's hard to find, like, um, a vision statement, we can put links either in this document or on the webpage, which they have to go to, to. Um, you know, learn how to apply, um, but on the profile, so. We can do that. Um, so whichever ones, if they're easy to navigate, if we have links, that would be great.
All right, and, and just to that point, um, we, we, you said that your initial draft, I know what we have up on the screen now is the select board duties, but in the initial draft that had the T A duties, which I, which I agree is more important. Um, I just want to be sure that if it's based on the job description, that the job description is. The one that was developed after the, the legislation went into effect in twenty sixteen. I'm, I'm sure, it probably is, but we should just be sure that it's, it seemed to be consistent when I read it. Okay.
It is.
Okay. All right. So what we have on the screen is, um, includes duties of the select board. My, my sense is that. We should, since this is a short document, we should focus more on the T A duties than the. Boards duties, and I think some of this information came off the town website, which the candidate should have some readily available access to. Mr. Doyle.
Uh, I, I'd agree, and maybe one of the ways in which we can accommodate this is to, uh, add the link.
Yeah.
The, um. Let me, I'm not best person at sharing a screen, but let me see if I can. Um. Let me see if I can get the. Original back. Here, I'll do it this way. All right, now, did you, did you just see your document change to have blue in it?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this was the original language. So this is exactly from the job description. So I actually do believe that it's, you know, it summarizes that the board. You know, is delegating to the town administrator these duties, you know, so, um. I do recommend that you go with the town administrator responsibilities. All of the candidates will understand the role of the select board. There's no, they want to know what their role is going to be. Um, like I said, we're doing another town, which is a three-member board that's very hands-on. They view their town administrator as an executive secretary. Your job description doesn't do that. So you want to be clear to people who are looking at jobs. It's a, you know. It's a, it's a, you know, it's a candidate's market right now. So you want to, you want to show them what their role is. So. Uh, I was assuming that job description was accurate. Um, so this is where this comes from. Only, um, many of you had no comments on this section because I think it was straightforward. Um, I only included the, the one. Um, I think we don't need to do people's work for them by giving them links to everything else. We're gonna give them the link to the town's webpage, and they can find their way. Um, so I think it's important to say, you know, are these things true? Are they, you know, the administration of the town activities? And, and it, and it is accurate that it refers to under the authority of the select board. But that also is why we talk about the ideal candidate and the priorities of working with. Um, entities, people and entities that aren't under the direct relate authority of the board. I think that's as important as the others. So. I guess I would ask people to comment on, does this blue, and that was in your initial one, this is right from the, the job description.
So, um, Mary, my thought is I, I liked the initial description. I just wanted to be sure we changed things like. So, um, Mary, my thought is I I liked the initial description. I just wanted to be sure we changed things like what a selectman to the select board.
Yes, I thought I caught most of them.
Yeah, I mean, just checking for that. But, you know, it was a selling point for us in twenty sixteen when we were doing the prior search because the legislation had just gone into effect and we had strengthened the role of the TA considerably. So we, you know, we were a three-member board with an executive secretary at one time, but that's a very different role for a TA than than what our town is offering. And there is a lot more day-to-day and management responsibility and authority in the TA. So I I think it's important that we highlight these bullet points that do set out just how much power and authority the TA does have under our current system. I see a couple of hands raised. Mr. Wells and then Ms. Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could say ditto, I would. I I have no, I think, you know, it took a lot of work to get this from, you know, prior boards to the town management study committee to the town meetings that passed this and endorsed this. I think the language is very specific, what we what we should have, what we want, and other than, like you said, Katie, the, you know, the the ministerial changes, like things from select meant to select board, those things, I think, I support it as written. That's it.
Okay, Ms. Collins. Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I I agree. I I like the section. It is the job and and it it'll help people self-select either for or 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 to step away from from this particular posting. So I I I think that's the way to go. Thank you.
But I asked, do you, and again, this is, this is us moving quickly to, you know, before tomorrow. Is this line still true, the personnel system in conjunction with the personnel board?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to check because sometimes in the change personnel boards get changed, and I just wanted to verify that was accurate.
The the role of our personnel board did change, so it is a more limited role, but they still do have a role. They're appointed by the moderator. So there is still, but it but it's been curtailed a bit, so.
Okay.
I think it's, my sense, just as one member, my sense is that it's okay to reference the personnel board because there still is a need for that board to be involved in reviewing positions and weighing in. Does anyone else feel differently? Mr. Wells, your hand is raised.
Sorry, I did it again. No, I agree a hundred percent.
Okay.
Great. All right. So I'm going to go with, it seems to be the consensus that we're going to go with the, other than the housekeeping and and there were some grammar and phrasing comments on some of these submissions. I'm going to go with this.
And actually, Ms. Icardi, one other thing related to this, at the very beginning, where you referenced the two thousand sixteen legislation. Last year, our town meeting approved some minor modifications to that, and it's pending in the legislature now. So there were, there were, they were minor cleanup type corrections. So it it may just be that once the new legislation is enacted, that if the process is still going on, you may want to give the new description to the candidates, but it all did really was correct. A typo in the hiring authority clarified a change about the rental of town properties, that it's for short-term rentals that the TA acts on.
Okay, this is still true. So I wouldn't want to muck up the works by saying, but there's something else pending that might make people more nervous. So, all right. Great. So then when we get to this was fairly straightforward on the government. Anybody want?
Taking out the, what's, what was the reason for the deletion of the first one? Is it just duplicative, duplicative?
Somebody recommended deleting it.
We do talk about the board being the the executive authority on page one and page two, so if that was.
All right. So yeah. Why don't I clean that up? Now, somebody made a good point. This is a bit vague, giving an example or two. The representative town meeting. Town meetings make, we leave it vague. I mean, we can add some, but people who know what representative town meeting is may not need specific examples. We can add, you know, we do say both general and zoning. Maybe I could expand that phrasing a little bit more. What are the key things that, you know, people look to the town meeting for? Most of the people you want to attract will will know most of it. It is important to let them know it's representative town meeting. That will be attractive to candidates who, you know, there's different theories on what's better. I happen to live in Shrewsbury. I'm actually an elected town meeting member in in my town. You know, so there's a different understanding of what the roles are. So I think it's important to let that be known.
Okay, it looks like we have two hands raised, Ms. Collins and Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was my comment, and it was just the phrase other matters that that I thought was a bit vague, but so I wasn't very specific myself. But I I mean, it it's probably, it's probably fine. There's a a lengthy interview process, and I'm sure people have questions because they're not familiar with representative town meeting. Then.
Right. I do think I, we can put in a few. So I mean, if it's, it's you know, disposition of property, that's true. What else would that open town meetings or, you know, what other things do you view as, you know, the biggest roles of the town meeting?
Maybe home rule petitions.
Yeah, that's nice. Yep.
Or I guess approval of home rule petitions. Did you have anything else, Ms. Collins? Or should we go on to Mr. Zulus?
Oh, no, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only comment is, to me, it's really about budgets and zoning. Those are the two primary things. And if we want to add a few others, that's fine, but if we wanted to say that what town meeting does primarily is, you know, we we town meeting makes the legislative decisions for the town and then includes such as budgets and zoning, you know, I mean. But but again, if we want to add a few more, that's fine. I I I kind of view it as budgets and zoning is the primary, primary two.
Like that, I, you know, I might rephrase this a little bit on the budgets and zoning and then say as well as, and just make it a connector phrase. I don't think you need much more than that.
Okay. We have anything else on this section?
I only wanted to ask myself is, you know, I don't like to presume every warrant committee is the same across municipalities. Does this capture the warrant sufficiently and the personnel board sufficiently, or should I try to beef them up or there are more description of your warrant committee that you want people to know, saying that they're your favorite friends and they, you know, do heavy lifting or they're active, you know, and there's some adjectives that I should be using to say it's a fabulous warrant committee who agrees with whatever the greater wants to do.
Madam Chair, I can't help it. It's very, you're trying to, are you trying to invoke a response from us today? I just, I'm sitting here, I just can't help it.
I think you haven't covered sufficiently.
All right.
Does anyone else?
I need some fun, you know.
The personnel board, I I I think that's correct.
Okay, great. All right. So now we're getting to the priorities. We didn't have an awful lot of comments on these, so I think we'll get through these quickly. So then there was some comments on, you know, mentioning revenue and including its commercial base. You know, we can't say everything, but we can say what you want to say. So if we say and oh, I see it was in generating revenue, including increasing is increasing its commercial base. So there's only a little bit of almost sentence structure change in this example. I don't know, and and we can certainly add about the lack of buildable land. We can add that phrase. Somebody suggested this, and you can see when we cut and paste edits, it does a group. We can add this phrase if people feel that that's appropriate, talking about the lack of buildable land and commercial zones. And I do think it's on is likely to say opposition to development.
Okay, Ms. Collins.
Yeah, I'll just own this comment, Madam Chair, and and say, I I I don't know how I would feel about adding all of that. I was just playing around with it. The thing that I I I was wondering about was just saying that we wanted to be strategic about increasing our structural base. I just don't know that that would cure our all of our financial woes, given, you know, prop two and a half. So I I thought that it would, that we should mention that it was important to manage operational costs. Be strategic and creative and strategic, that's what it says, in managing operational costs and generating revenue and just say, including increasing its commercial base, because that was part of the original, and it's something that I think a a lot of people would would love to see if we can figure out how how to do it in a way that honors the the history of the town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make sure I put my hand down. I just want to be careful, like what I view as like negatives. I I've said this a bunch of times. I think anybody who, if you're really truly interested in this position, you're going to do your homework and I mean, things like affordable housing, available land, commercial. There is a litany of information out there, and let's let's see what they bring forward. Let, you know, let's see if the candidate can identify challenges and bring it forward to us, and perhaps they have a strategy that none of us have ever thought of, because as we all know, we've looked at many strategies here just on this board over the past five years.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Doyle.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to a- agree on that point and also to indicate on the preceding conversation about budgets and zoning that we may want to indicate the town meeting has oversight or responsibility for bylaws as well.
General bylaws as well as only bylaws. Okay. Yeah, I think that's included in the initial draft, but it wasn't in the change, so we should.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For what it's worth, I I agree with not wanting to be too negative here about opposition to development because that some are, some aren't. There's different viewpoints reflected throughout town like any other community. I'm sorry, Mr. Doyle, did you have something else?
I I just wanted to add, the tone is very important as is being discussed here, because we want people who take a look at this, good candidates, to say, that's something I want to do. That's a place I want to go to. That's a job I want to achieve at.
I think you're right, and I think the challenges that people want, they're going to know, you know, a- anybody with the experience knows where some of the the challenges. Also, it's their opportunity, your challenge becomes their opportunity and, you know, and I think we we view it that way. And it's a great interview question. So anybody watching this recording will know there'll be a question about that. And that's okay. We want them to know that because it's important. All right, change management. And maybe this is where it's too confusing. This was, so some of these challenges, so that you know, the priorities. This was generated from the submissions I got on my my questionnaire. So while some of it may be confusing and vague, it's because I cut and pasted from what people said their priorities and challenges are. So that's why this is helpful to say, what do we really want it to stay? And do we need even this section, you know, so it's totally up to you. This is the, this is the meat of what you're looking for. So this is important. This section.
Ms. Collins.
Okay, I'll own this comment too, because I was, but I'm, 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 I liked the idea of it a lot. And especially because it did come out of I I'm this this group process, but it's it's so true. And and it goes along with this sort of citizen engagement piece as well. And even, you know, within the organization. So that's like, it's a big, high-level skill. And and so maybe, maybe I was confused, but just I I think maybe as it stands, I'm really liking it now, so I can retract my comment.
Okay. My sense too, if we meant, if we get into details like the MBTA communities legislation, then there's probably a lot of others that we could specifically mention, not just in housing and but in other areas. So I think the broad topic here is that we're looking for someone who's going to be able to help manage the process of change, which is inevitable and and how and what the change is, is something that's going to be shaped by a lot of people, including Tom meeting and different boards as well as the TA, but we want the TA to be involved in it, maybe leading some of it. That's what I understood from what I initially read. I see a couple of hands. Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And 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 I guess the only thing that I would the only change that I would suggest to this, it's really not the changing, I don't know that there's a changing landscape of municipal government other than there's a changing landscape of the town that is reflected in municipal government or or being dealt with by municipal government. And that includes the changing landscape of the town, including increased population, increased needs for the schools, increase, you know, to give those, maybe those kinds of examples in terms of what we're talking about. You know, and and I also, you also, we also may say potential take changing landscape because, you know, as we see there, there, and as we are aware, there are there are some people who don't think that we need to make change, make any changes. So so I might, might pose that as the potential changing landscape of maybe town functions or something. It's not like our municipal government isn't changing, right? It is what it is. There's no proposal to change to become, you know, to change to a mayor system or to change from the current system. But there are currents of change, given school needs, population needs and and other and housing needs, you know, for, as a few examples.
Let me just ask with maybe the growth, maybe referencing population growth or something along those lines fit in here, rather than changing landscape, maybe we refer to growth.
Yeah, I think that, I think the word landscape is is what's throwing people off. I, because the reality is there are demands, increased demands, whether it's EPA, whether it is, you know, there's so many more regulations. And and we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, demographics. That's a changing landscape as well. So that is kind of inferred here. But I think landscape may be the confusing word because you're not looking for another government study committee. You know, we're not talking about that. So maybe we can. And and the landscape is, it's hard to get good people, and the landscape is, you know, public discord is, you know, on the rise. So there's a lot of different things that could be rolled into this, and it might be depending on the glasses or the lens that somebody is reading this sentence with, and they might read it a different way. But I, let's remove landscape and we can add things like the population growth, housing. You know, because there's, there are different demands and viewpoints. It's.
And just before we go on to the others who have their hands raised, what I was really getting at with the growth is, you know, we know we have several developments that are either have been permitted or close to being permitted, some maybe even further along than that, like the Ice House. So there is some new developments in town that are going to bring in additional population, additional challenges for the schools, that the TA is going to have to be a part of the conversation about. So I see Mr. Doyle first, and then we'll go to Ms. Collins and then Mr. Wells.
Very small, Madam, Madam Chair. I would just like, in the second line where it says help navigate, insert the word Milton. So we're talking about the town administrator to help Milton navigate.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Doyle. Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry for the wordsmithing, and thank you for taking land. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry for the wordsmithing, um, and thank you for taking landscape out, because I really was confused. Um, with that, um, but it may be something as simple as saying the i- inevitable changes required by, and and you might say something like um federal and state um regulations, um, you know, that and the population and demographic, demographic and societal changes. I I don't know, some something like that, and and even, um, you mentioned um also uh real estate development, which, you know, we have a lot going on, so I think that's a a good, a good approach um to to list out some things in a general form. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only point is, and and I used to be of this thought. You know, we're talking about population growth, and I don't know which report it was in that we recently received. Even even light of all the things that have happened in the past twenty years here, the population's never really changed. The only real significant change we ever had is that we are, like the year that Curry, you know, all those in-house students were allowed to to then, you know, use their, use their, um, make this their residence. Unlike Randolph, when I, Randolph used to be about twenty-five thousand, now they're well over thirty thousand. We've never hit twenty-eight or, we've never hit twenty-nine thousand. So that's just my only thought, is that, yeah, I think I used to be of the same mindset, the way of this bully population, but for some years, we look back, this never happens, we never get to those higher numbers. But I agree with all the other comments about all the other societal demographic and particularly the housing challenges we're looking at.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Collins. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, your hand is down. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, maybe demographics, because that includes population, so I think I'll 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 delete population. Um, it it, you know, if you look up and again, any good candidate is gonna look up the the demographics, they're gonna look up the race, they're gonna look up the income, is there an income divide? Is there a, you know, housing divide? All, you know, uh, the the great thing is, the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, has most of this information captured, and the good candidates will look there, but you are not unique in that some of these things are shifting, and your proximity to Boston, um, you know, depending on which side of the fence you're on, is is a great opportunity to, you know, for somebody to to come and work on some of these dynamic issues.
Mr. Zulus.
I I'll just add, it's it's a good point that Richard made, you know, since nineteen fifty-nine, the population hasn't really, when we were looking at school building, population hasn't really increased until the two thousand and twenty, and since this one, it ticked up over twenty-eight thousand, but it was very consistent since fifty-nine. But we did see an increase in households, and that's what led to, so we saw an increase in households, but not population, so it's a good, it's a good thing to focus on demographics, I think, I think it's good.
Although, the reason I mentioned population is because of the number of forty Bs and other projects that are coming online, or will be coming online in the next few years, but um, okay, well, so why don't we let Mary finesse that, and do we want to go on to any other priority categories here?
Um, I wouldn't, so maybe conversation, because I did throw in, everybody who answered my survey questions brought up affordable housing, so I think we need to, you know, uh, put that in and come up with a way to to word it. And, and what do we mean about affordable housing? And and again, this is a hot issue around, you know, where and there's strong opinions on all sides, so how do we navigate the wording we want to put in here?
Okay, and I see Ms. Collins' hand raised. Ms. Collins.
Okay, I'll I'll own that these are my my suggestions too, so um, I I just added, uh, well, I changed the his to to historic charm and green landscape, because um I just had a concern about the the language of cultural and community priorities. Um, but um, but to to talk about the historic charm and green landscape and balancing of dynamic dynamics of meeting the needs of a twenty-first century community related to, and I think it should be affordable housing then. Um, and mental health has been a a big, a big, um, but maybe it's just health in general, or maybe it doesn't belong here. And education, maybe those things don't belong here, because it's more about economic development, so maybe we should say something about that, even though we say something above, so I think it's not, I I I was um I was adding something, there are a couple of things that don't really track here, so I just want to say that.
Ms. Collins, I just have to say, this shows you're still going full speed ahead until eight o'clock tomorrow night, and not letting up at all on your final day, so. Oh, so all all good, this just shows all the work that you've put into this. Any other.
Thank you, you're very gracious, Madam Chair.
For both of you, Madam Chair. This is like a candidate's forum, not to departing veteran members of the sport, I I agree, I would think of that myself.
All right, so do we have any comments on what Ms. Collins has proposed we change here? Or anything else from anyone? Ms. Collins?
Apologies, I forgot to lower my.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would make the suggestion that we do remove the mental health, because I don't think mental health and affordable housing should be directly linked. Um, I I I think we could put in the societal things, but if this section is economic development and affordable housing, I think it's about balancing the needs, I like, and the education is directly related, because it could, housing is gonna increase your school population. Though, I wouldn't necessarily put mental health in and of itself here. Um, you might elsewhere deal with um the community challenges of, um you know, social and mental um impacts, uh, but I don't know that I would put mental health in this section.
And Ms. Icardi, I leave it up to you, but maybe this is a place to add in the commercial development, uh, the need to do what we can to try to foster commercial development in our business districts.
All right.
If if you think it's appropriate there. Uh, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, I agree with Mary, and and not to disagree, Melinda, I get your the umbrella you've got opened up here, but I agree with that. I I I can't find that in context of this job, so I agree with you on that. Thank you, that's it, Madam Chair. I put my hand down.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Collins.
No, I I I agree. I I was saying that we should probably take mental health and education out, um, because uh I hadn't thought about conflating the mental health with with affordable housing, um, and I certainly didn't mean to do that. Um, and, you know, education, um, you know, we we have to fund it through revenue, so I guess it could stay, but I think I would take that out as well, because that is you know, that that is a um sort of a a fair housing, and um, I don't know, one of our attorneys could tell me what what the the actual body of law is that 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 has to do with, um, but, yeah, so I I would take it out, but tha- thank you.
And I do think that you've covered schools up here under change management, so I think that you've got it, I think you've got it in there.
In the next category, too.
And then you've got education, exactly.
All right, is there anything else?
And and state under leadership, that was just a, all right. Um, so then the last one on here is, we have room for one more bullet. Somebody said the networks with other communities. Um, we can certainly add that, we kind of referenced that up above with the partnerships. That might be a strong, like partnerships might be a good heading for that.
Thoughts on that, Ms. Collins?
Well, I I I had the same thought about that regional approach, where, you know, partnerships is also a great way to put it. Um, um, Mike Denney brought a lot in that regard, and um, and maybe the the next um TA won't have sort of the um the sort of re- ready, ready to to go um and be built upon uh uh, relationships to the same extent, but having um, having the ability to really build those is is very important to us, because Mr. Zulus outlined um, some of the things that have been going on um recently.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I think I think that's perfect, the partnerships, and when you're talking about regional cooperat- cooperation with um, or cooperation with surrounding cities and towns, um, federal and state agencies, and state and federal elected officials, I think. I think those, I think that really captures um something that Mike was very good at, and that is very important.
Ms. Collins.
Now, I this, this should be the last thing I'm going to say. Um, I was just wondering about climate. Um, you know, we're we're in the midst of creating a climate action plan, we're doing um, a study right now, and I'm just wondering if we would like to put that in, under economic development, or under change management, or so I I I don't, I don't know, um.
I wonder if it also fits under partnerships, since that's an effort we have to be working on jointly, it probably fits under a few headings here.
Right, but but I do think that it's going to become increasingly, it's already important, and it's going to become increasingly important. Thank you.
Ms. Icardi, what what is your plan? Is it to circulate a new draft, um, incorporate all of these regions?
What I would like to do, and I and I know we're kind of under the time crunch, what I'd like to do is if my struggle is, you know, can you delegate approval to one or two of you? You know, to once this is put together, with certainly, I'm viewing it as housekeeping um, of, you know, putting together the thoughts that have come out here. And I don't know if there's a way to delegate the authority and approval to somebody, um, or one or two people to say, as amended and discussed at this meeting, something like that. Um, unless, because I don't think, you know, you have another meeting posted. Um, so, and I know you're all working till eight o'clock, maybe we could just take a recess till tomorrow night. I too, I I leave that all to you on how to, how to move from here. I do, um I would like to just, uh, I'm gonna stop sharing here for a minute, I have saved this, and stop sharing. And then I'm going to see if I can share. Um, here we go. Okay, so you're seeing the profile now?
Yes.
I'm getting better at this, I, by the time I'm done with this, I'll be really good at it, uh, the sharing of the screen. So we'll make it fit in this way, you know, um and we're gonna, I'm work with, I'm gonna work with um the town administrator to get the finances, that's just, that's just fact-based, nobody needs to approve that. Um.
But the ra- the bond rating, I, that was one of my comments, was the tri- it's triple A, so I just.
Yeah, this is another town's, you can see the budget is not yours, this was just.
Okay.
Or, that was a placeholder.
Oh, okay.
My, my, all of this is wrong, I'm sure. Um, the looking at the calendar, if we get this posted, I was looking at a May twenty-six deadline. Um, it it, you know, four weeks is enough time, people apply on the first day and on the last day. Uh, I had a deadline of yesterday, I got three resumes at eleven o'clock last night. I don't know who they think they're fooling by applying at eleven o'clock at night, that doesn't make it any more or less real. So I have to say, your job description, so you can see here the qualifications. Um, this is based on your job description, whoops. And I put in ten years, your job description says ten to twelve years of experience. So whoever approved that in two thousand and sixteen, um you know, i- it's pretty heavy. And I'm not sure, you know, so we did say, let me see, bachelors, uh, ten years. What I would like to add, if you don't mind, is or any equivalent combination of education, certification, training, or experience. I was trying to be true to the job description, but I think if we add that phrase, then it becomes, you know, your screening committee's um, assessment of that experience, so I I think there's a way to to do it, if if that is okay, if I do that.
I I know, we have three hands raised, and they were raised before that most recent um question that Ms. Icardi raised, what, why don't we, um, why don't we go to the see, let's go to Mr. Wells, and then Mr. Doyle, and then Mr. Zulus, and then we can come back to the question, because I had some thoughts on the qualifications and questions about that section as well. So, Mr. Wells, you were first.
Hey, I forgot my first question, her most recent comment just changed, my, um, I agree with Mary, I don't want it to be too heavy that perhaps a very good candidate who has equivalence does not apply. Again, you know, it's a process to get appointed anyway, and we all know it's gonna be a pretty thorough process, and then my section thought is um, only because I'm pressed for time here, I would be inclined to move that we approve this subject to whatever final comments, and whoa, whoever the body wants to delegate the final approval to, but I would rather have this done now than two days, so and no disrespect to the potential winners tomorrow, I don't want to, I don't want to um take Mary's time, I, and the work we've all done so far, off track at all, even for a day or two, so, just my own thought of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair, with respect to Mary's question in terms of authorization. I'd be very comfortable with the two members of the select board who are on the steering committee. Uh, second point, um, Mary, in your last notation, where you itemized the series of uh qualifications. I would advocate having experience in the first position rather than at the tail end. And um, I wanted to check the photo that was scrolled by a minute ago just to make sure, uh, the old town hall, it doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah.
Well, then.
That was one of my comments, Mary, was that we could use maybe the gazebo or the new town hall, but as as beautiful as that old building was, I think it would be misleading to have it in this.
All right.
His um, profile.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I agree with Richard on the uh the need to move forward on this. I would go the other way, uh, um, uh, that Arthur went. Um, and and say, rather than have the, since Richard and I are already on the committee, delegate to to Arthur, if he were willing to accept it, the um the uh, the authority to to finalize this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zulus.
Madam Chair, if that's a motion by Mr. Zulus, I would gladly second it.
Okay, but before we get to that, I I had a comment or a question on the qualifications also. Um, so my my thought is, you know, it says a bachelor's degree in political science, public administration, or a related field. So I think by adding a related field in there, that really opens up, I'm not sure it has to be someone with a bachelor's in political science, you know, I, our last time administrator, I think his background was in accounting, so um, I don't know if this came from the job description or not, but I think a bachelor's degree might be enough. Or you could say in a rela- or a bachelor's degree in a related field, but I'm not even sure, arguably, anything probably other than maybe chemistry, you could probably argue is uh is related, but I like the fact that you have ten years of progressively responsible experience, because we are talking about the top administrative job in town. And it, I don't think we're necessarily looking for ten years as a TA, or maybe even as an assistant TA, but some combination of progression in job experience, and I I think the ten years I I I'm actually okay with the ten years, but it doesn't have to be all in one particular role, or in the top role. Um, I like adding the progressively responsible experience. Mr. Wells and Ms. Collins.
My apologies, Madam Chair, I forgot to bring it down.
Oh, all right, thank you, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I I agree with what what you just said, um, also, I I mean, yeah, I I think um, you know, political science, it's quite different than municipal admin, you know, public administration, so um, I I think just stressing sort of public administration or a related field. Um, and and I agree, you could have done, you could have a lot of different, um, be it um um, BAs or even a BS, um, and uh, and do this work, I think it's that the key is um progressively responsible experience, um, so in in a related field, which could be, you know, even management, um, or, you know, so I I think um I think that's, uh, I like that, those um suggestions you made, thank.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
I'm sorry, did no one say the importance of BS, Ms. Joan? I'm sorry, did Melinda say the importance of BS in this job?
I knew, I knew you would pick up on that. I did.
Might have been a follow-on from my chemistry comment. Oh, well, uh, just for the record, I think someone with a chemistry major could probably have great experience for the role, as long as they've been in the management or, um, municipal.
I was referring to another form of BS.
I know, I know you were. I know you were. I, I get it, but I, I think that's where the BS reference may have come from. All right, um, was there anything else that you needed from us, Ms. Icardi?
Yes, you highlighted the salary. What, you know, what are we advertising this at?
You know, not that it may be relevant, but I know the last time when we did this, six years or so ago, we, we didn't initially at first include a salary and as the, after the process had started and some candidates had asked, um, the committee came back to the board to ask, the committee actually did a search of other communities to see what was marketed, and they came back to the board and we approved a salary range. Um, does anyone have any strong thoughts on this for, for what will be included in the profile? Is this range? I know that, I mean, the range is comparable to, to where it had been. Mr. Wells?
So, Madam Chair, I think we need to be comparable to where it had been. And I think we need to be comparable to the other communities that are also in the same situation that we're in. Because I think if we're too low as compared to the others, then that may sway a candidate who's tells you could be interested in a great TA to not even apply. That's just, that's why I think we, I think a range helps us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Madam Chair, I agree, and, uh, having it in the first round right in this document is essential. We, we don't want to go through iterations with the timeline that we have at present for us.
Ms. Icardi, is, is the salary range in the commentary with what other communities are offering as a range that are, you know, of our population size, challenges?
Well, and it's, and it's tricky. I mean, I will tell you Marblehead, you know, very wealthy, you know, North Shore, um, advertised at one eighty. Arlington is about to offer over two hundred. Natick was two hundred. Um, East Long Meadow has no candidates. They said one forty. Uh, again, it's Western Mass. You know, um, I guess I, I don't know the answer to this question. What is the most, what is the salary of the most recent incumbent of this position?
Well, and, and the incumbent had been in for several years, so obviously it's had salary increases over the years, but I, I think we're within the range that you designated was within the range of at least the starting point and, um.
Okay, so I think that, um, I think that, and this is based on my experience as well. I plugged in this number. Um, I think that you're okay. It does say plus minus, depend on qualifications. Uh, the, the concern, not the concern, one of the factors is you're asking for ten years of progressively responsible experience, and you're going to be at, uh, if you're going with this amount, you're at a little bit low for that experience. So I, I think so long as we advertise it, uh, depending on it, because what you don't want to do i- is we have seen a lot apply and, and, which is why I was concerned over the ten years, most are fewer, they do have ten years of work experience, but some don't have the municipal experience, and you don't want to set your salary so high. It, it, it really is a, a form of art. So I, I think let's go with this number, and it says depending on qualifications, and it does say plus or minus. So it gives you the flexibility. I wouldn't want to say, um, one fifty to one eighty, because then you're getting into a debate over, well, if it's five years, it's, it's not a direct formula. And I think that, um, I've already had people wanting to apply for this job, so I mean, we're going to get candidates. And I, I think that, um, I think that this salary is, is, is in the range, um, and we'll go from there. You're absolutely right. You don't want to advertise it with no pay. I mean, that just sets you back.
Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree, and, um, we certainly want any good candidate, uh, to feel comfortable with the notion of negotiating with us. If, uh, that should be what is of mutual benefit. I would, I understand the plus and minus after the one seventy-five. I'm just wondering, um, when you say a range, the midpoint of which is one seventy-five?
I wouldn't say one seventy-five is the midpoint, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you would leave it as it is?
I would.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zulus?
Just a question, given the other numbers that you mentioned, Mary, um, it doesn't make, and this is a small point, does it make sense to go up to one eighty, just to make it a little bit, a little, look a little better, or do you think this looks good enough?
You know, I, I debated, and yeah, I would, if, if, if the board so chooses, I, I would not hesitate to say one eighty. It just, it seems silly that it's five thousand dollars, but that seems to be the number that's out there in a lot of the ads. Um.
For what it's worth, I had the same thought about maybe one eighty being a better target. Uh, we have two hands raised, and I'd also like to give Ms. Fagan an opportunity to weigh in with any thoughts on this or any aspects of the job description. So, Mr. Wells and then Ms. Collins?
I agree with Mike one hundred percent. That's it. And you, and, and you, Madam Chair.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Collins.
Me as well.
Likewise.
Okay, so it's, it sounds like we've got unanimous support for that. And it, the language does say we anticipate negotiating, so this is going to be subject negotiation and.
There we go.
Okay.
My eyes aren't that good. I'm like, wait a minute.
I was, I was readying my application.
Uh, we, we don't necessarily have to talk about it, but I just want to state for the record, I'm happy to see the residency is not required language right in the profile. I think that's very important. That the general public understand this as well as the candidates that, um, we have had town administrators who lived in town, we've had town administrators who do not, and um, that is not a requirement, has not been in the recent past in any event. Uh, I want to ask again, Marie Fagan, who's been in this job, was our first strong TA, and whether she has any comments or questions and, um, either to talk about during the meeting or to provide to Ms. Icardi at a later date, if you would prefer.
Thank you, Ms. Conlon. I actually did have some, um, suggested changes, but every one of you have already asked them, and, um, I will be following up with Ms. Icardi, um, to go over the finance numbers and some other small tweaks.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. So we had a recommendation first for two members of the committee, and then Mr. Zulus suggested Mr. Doyle for this to be delegated. I do think we have to pick one person to delegate this to rather than two, just to avoid any, um, you know, any issues. We, in the past, we've typically delegated one person. So, Mr. Zulus has his hand raised. Mr. Zulus?
Greg, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would just amend it to say perhaps Mr. Doyle and Ms. Fagan, the interim town administrator.
Second.
Second. And that was going to be my suggestion as well, so.
I was too.
All right, so I, I guess we're taking that as a motion by Mr. Zulus that's been seconded by Mr. Wells. Is that bibled everybody?
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
All right, then all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you to Mr. Doyle and Ms. Fagan for being willing to take on that role. And thank you to Ms. Icardi for all of your work, putting this together and all the ongoing work you're going to do with the committee and the board over the next several weeks.
Well, we're really excited, and I will get right on it with Mr. Doyle and Ms. Fagan, and I want to, you know, thank you from the world of municipal management to the two of you who, your, your last meeting will be, you know, putting forth the next, the future of the town, so, um, I, I appreciate that, and I can imagine it's a melancholy but happy day. So, to you.
Melancholy for us, but not for them.
That's not true.
I'm going to say goodbye, let you say your goodbyes, and then I'll be in touch. Take care, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Ms. Icardi.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, that, this was the only item on our agenda, so do we have a motion to adjourn at two eighteen? Second, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
And Mr. Wells?
I don't want to say for the final time, but yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good meeting on Wednesday night. I'll, I'll be watching. On television.
First live.
Oh, first live. Oh, that's right. You won't be on Zoom, but it's a live meeting. That's great. We'll have to watch on Channel Eight.
But where are we going anyway? Are we going to CLA or are we going to Cronin?
The blue.
Oh, the blue? Really? Okay, all right.
The town hall, yes.
I was the only one with a TV access.
All right, everyone. Have a good afternoon. Thanks for all of your time today.
Thanks. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.